Yeah, it's good to see you again. Um, certainly our appreciation for you taking this on. We know it's not easy doing this day in and day out and, you know, walking the cold in the streets and meeting people, so, you know, however it turns out, thank you because a lot of people will do it, and obviously no limit. For the most part, these questions were submitted by members of the Park City Chamber here on the Park City Board of Elders, and certainly when you think about it, these are the two entities that represent Park City's biggest economic engines, resort town business, lodging, and surrounding real estate. So the format for today is a little bit different than I do for the radio station, a number of questions that we want to get through, and we're going to ask every one of you the same question and kind of just work down the line. And I'm going to do my best to keep track and start with Steve, and then let's start with Josh, and if I screw up, please let me know because it's certainly incompatible. We do it all the time. Um, and then they had mentioned Q and A, and I don't know, we got a lot of stuff here. I don't know that was advertised as how to do a Q and A, they've got a microphone setup, so if that's the case, then that's the case. So let's start here. Oh, and I'm going to give you 30 seconds at the end, just to wrap things up, rather than doing introductions now, hopefully that's okay.
Leslie, we thought we'd change it up. We have a few questions for you today.
That's the first one. What time do we have this morning?
And then how late are we going to go to, because my babysitter's only going to be around for a little while.
Well, yeah, that's a good point, and I know that we had wanted to admit that, commit to our time frame of 1:00, so let's get started. And hopefully for those who can stay, will stay, and maybe with other people. Okay, this is to you, and then again, we're going to go down the line here. Park City is newly built out, with the exception of perhaps Park City Heights, residential infill, no one knows exactly, challenging the sews and old town. The city has purchased a lot of the flatter land, playground valley, the McPoole and Mard area for open space, so what's your position on growth and density moving forward? Is Park City big enough, or do we need to annex more property?
I'm Steve Joyce, and the answer is, I think we actually have a lot more construction that's coming than you would expect from your description there. Uh, the base of Deer Valley gets developed, the base of Park City gets developed, um, I'm on the planning commission, we're still dealing with Treasure, it will get developed at some point in some form. Um, and then the other piece that we just start to see is the redevelopment of Bonanza and maybe into Prospector. I mean, Bonanza is 99 acres, and we just basically took five acres off the market, um, but there's a lot of 20, 30-year-old buildings, truck parking, storage, all that kind of stuff in there, and that's going to change. So my first thing is, it's not, we're not done.
Not Old Town, shouldn't we? I misspoke. Platinum, I mean, we really don't owe the best thing.
Yeah, and so I don't, I don't think we need to annex more. In fact, in the planning commission, we've been very careful about not doing that unless it's for open space.
Okay, Josh?
Uh, yeah, Josh Oxon, I basically see it correctly. There's not a lot of space for new development, especially 3,000-square-foot homes, but that's not necessarily what we as a community need. Well, we could use our more stacked flats, more year-round rentals, seasonal rentals, obviously affordable housing, and a lot of that can happen as we redevelop both Bonanza Park and Prospector. It's the appropriate neighborhood for more density, more height to go into, and as the density gets greater, then the transit options work better. You know, just all the complete community goals that we have work better in a walkable neighborhood and one easily connected to transit, which Bonanza Park and Prospector would be.
Andy, go ahead.
So growth has been the number-one issue around town as long as I've been here, and certainly it's what I'm here knocking on doors, people are still concerned about. And probably the number-one symptom coming out of growth is traffic and the overall intensity in the town. And I think it's something that we need to try to pace. I have been a big advocate for open space because I think that's the one way we can stall growth, or we can put it off forever by preserving that land. And we need to work closely with our developers to do it in a way that is compatible with our community. It's become very difficult because the projects that are left are the hard ones, and those are the ones that are infill, that are surrounded by mature neighborhoods. So going forward, we are going to continue to challenge this growth, and it needs to be the number-one priority for our council to address that.
Three of yours?
Uh, the last pieces that we annexed were over in Quinn's Junction, would be the northwest and southwest quadrants, uh, the film studio was the last piece that we had to take in because that's kind of forced on the city. Uh, I am not in favor of annexing any more ground into the city. I know one of the things that we always deal with is that there isn't anyone who lives in Stock, Sniffield that would mind if the whole base would be king part of the city, and there isn't anyone who lives with the city who would not kill us if we ever brought that up. Uh, so I am not in favor of expanding the city limits at all. I think the mode is just about complete with the great purchase of Bonanza flat, and I'm also not in favor of integrating hyper-ordinances to achieve certain things. I'd rather do public-private partnerships around us than giving up certain things that would fundamentally change the quality of life and order here.
Timmy?
Yeah, I agree with the footprint of the city. I think it's where it needs to be. I'm not in favor of annexing and growing. I also think our land management code is as excellent as it is, and one of the reasons that the city can build a product that will deliver what the community is looking for is that we can build within the existing codes, ordinances, and zones, and meet our density and our height, and still deliver a product that addresses our middle-income needs and our workforce needs, which represents the opportunity. If you look at Bonanza Park, private sector development would result in multimillion-dollar condos, ad-based, and nightly rental, and there would be no neighborhood. We have the opportunity to actually seed an amazing neighborhood in that district and see the entire redevelopment of that area with that purchase and with that seeding of middle-income and workforce housing. So that, in my opinion, is the opportunity, that's how you stay within the height and the density limits that our community has asked us to abide by. And if you get into the private sector, there gives and gets some trade-offs, and you're going to have to be giving greater height, greater density, to get any additional affordable housing.
Mark, move.
Well, I guess it's too damn close, we're not going to annex anything. Um, I noticed, yeah, uh, I noticed that a lot of times that we are comparing ourselves usually to Aspen, and when I looked at their affordable housing, they're looking at 2,900 units, and their breakdown is 1,600 ownership type and 1,300 rental type, which we're really not in, we really haven't worked that way as a city. But instead of working on bigger projects and how the world has been going with tiny homes, if we're looking at something that's considered affordable, then it turns into moderate, and then it's dead, we should be looking somewhere along the lines of that. But when I moved here in 89, there were plenty of lots that we could put snow in, and now our biggest problem is where do we put our snow, because those empty lots are where we used to put all of our snow. And normally, a lot in Old Town is really not reasonably able to be built on, so you usually need about, you know, two lots, possibly even three lots. So, yeah, my big concern is where are we going with affordable housing here in town? And, you know, like Dana said, it's not about going on the height, more about, you know, private enterprise, but let's consider something that we could really do structurally, you know, should contain our homes for tiny homes, and I think that's a reasonable aspect here in this town. And the property that I've always thought was reasonable is right across the line condos where I used to live in that minor shack back in the day, and you got that BLM land across the street with those old four, old three, and it burnt out. That seems like a reasonable place, if we could just work with the state trying to get that property back.
Okay, starting around, just for, I just wanted to make a point, and I had three phone calls this election season from people living in the center of the basin asking why they cannot vote in the selection. They really feel impacted by everything that's happening here, so that's an interesting point. Well, getting that way back, Deer Valley, Park City Mountain Resort, of course, Treasure still to come as best-in-developments. These are all second homes, they're C resort properties, not talking about homes for people who live here day in and day out. Two of you, of course, the answer we know is yes, but let's talk to the others. Do you agree with the city council that we should be building 800 units of affordable housing, spending a minimum of $40 million in taxpayer dollars? If so, why is that a good expenditure of tax dollars for both our stampede and capital expenditures considering pretty enough? If you don't agree with that, why not? Josh?
Um, yes, I think it's an entirely appropriate spend of our, of our town's money because we have identified that as community, as a priority, as something that we lack, that as more and more of the workforce can't afford to live in this house, and right now, it's about 15% of the service industry that can actually afford to live in Park City, that's just going to add to our traffic woes as more and more of these people are pushed to Camus or Eber or down into Salt Lake. Really, the aggressive goal, I think, is fantastic, and then, once we get to that point, then we can reassess, see what our needs are five, six years down the road, and make a new goal, and see kind of what the community needs at this point. What we have in terms of housing stock, again, versus what we need for just our workforce at the resorts, that need is not being met. So since the, since private industry is not going to provide that for us, I think it is appropriate as a community to come together and as a government, make that decision.
So I think your answer is yes, and...
Yes, and I actually didn't completely answer your last question, so I just want to start out by saying I am not in favor of further annexation unless it's for open space on our boundaries that we want to manage. But as far as that being yes, I support those goals, I helped set those goals, and I think there are practical and moral reasons why we want our middle class living in town, but I also think I do it as community building. Only 15% of the people that work in Park City live in Park City. We continue to grow as a town in terms of units, but we haven't grown in population. I think our population is actually going to decline if we don't find a way to bring young families to the town and keep our seniors, and that's why I believe our affordable housing program is absolutely critical.
So is that 15%, though? Because people are driving to Salt Lake, though, to work?
Uh, well, the 15% of...
People live here because it's a nice bedroom community.
Are you talking about people living in our affordable housing units, or people living at work?
No, just the 15% you referred to.
Certainly, no. Right now, if you look at the workforce that comes into town, 15% of the workforce lives in Park City proper. And I'm not sure what exactly the number is of our population and communities, but there's certainly an infinite amount of that. But the reality is, it's, uh, the free market has priced it out of, out of reach for teachers, cops, essential service workers, and that's who we're focused on right now. Not all of them can live here, we have a transportation challenge which we're addressing, so we can have workforce regionally, but we want some of them living here and being part of our community.
Dana?
You know, I think, I think the strength of us is the socioeconomic diversity that's made up of our town. Historically, we've always been a blue-collar town. I am, I am supportive of continuing to look at the potential and possibilities of affordable housing, but I also think this is actually more up to you than it is to us. And in the administration before I was in, there were two rounds of community visioning, almost every, every five, six years there would be visioning. We did it twice while I was in office, and part of that was for you guys to set up the roadmap of what it is we should be doing. And so I, I think we need to actually have that community dialogue again to determine, when the, when the government doesn't hear enough from the citizens in terms of setting up the goals and the visions from the constituents, the government will fill in the blanks. So I think part of this decision is actually on your shoulders in terms of trying to let the government know what you think is important. I do think the projects and infill projects that have, that have happened, the Limes, One, Snow Creek, uh, the Lower Park Avenue RDA are all great projects. I'd much rather see smaller infill projects than larger projects where we put all those people somewhere else.
So all those visioning surveys that Dana just referenced, this council has heard you loud and clear, which is why, at your request, we elevated affordable housing to a critical priority. The fact that it's been neglected for so long is why we have the crisis on our hands. Now, 40 years ago, the free market, the private sector, was building housing for families, housing for neighborhoods. That's what Lower Park Meadows is, Thames Canyon, Prospector. That was built by the private sector. Those numbers no longer work. I'm a huge fan of the private sector addressing our needs, but when the private, private sector no longer can or will do it, and this is a can-do it, the private sector cannot build affordable housing in this community, then I think there's a responsibility and an obligation on behalf of the government. We've heard you loud and clear for the last 15 years, and we are implementing a very aggressive affordable housing initiative. I'm a staunch supporter of it. I see it as the only way we're going to perpetuate and carry our authentic families, neighborhoods, and community forward into the future. I like places where there's epic trick-or-treating that breaks down on Halloween. That's the definition of a true authentic neighborhood. We are losing those, and you feel it every day. That is slipping away, and it's been slipping away for two decades with nothing done about it. This council is aggressively addressing and delivering on your behalf.
I noticed we all keep talking about the word responsibility, and when I moved here back in the early days, I noticed that Deer Valley always stepped up with their, you know, products of making sure that their workforce was taken care of, and this is what I think we're really concerned about, is our workforce. Deer Valley had always had units, and, you know, Prospector, Rivers Edge, Empire units, and I think the key to that was always their transportation mode, because a lot of people lived in Salt Lake. So, yes, you definitely use more housing, but I also think that Vale needs to step up in their workforce service housing. It doesn't have to be necessarily in Park City. They definitely need to understand that they need to come up with a transportation mode to make sure that they get those employees back and forth. So when the J1s come in, and they're coming in right now, you know, you've got mountain lands that can do a bit, but we will always need more housing, and I think the resort, when we talk about responsibility, is responsible for those employees that they're bringing in to help them out finding other places to live.
Steve, why do you finish off?
Well, I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. I really support affordable housing, and I absolutely believe we need to do it, and I think the steps that we're doing right now to, we basically are using $40 million from the, against the Lower Park Avenue RDA to pay for it, is a good step, but if you look, we've set a goal of 800. If you look at the success that we're kind of tracking to right now, in like 2022, even with all the private contributions to that, some of which are, you know, for plans that haven't even been approved yet, we get to 200. And so when you start looking at the amount of money that you would have to spend to actually build out 800 and figure out where they go and all this, I just don't think we have a complete plan yet. And part of our financing strategy makes it so that all we're building right now is units that people can buy. And there's a lot of our workforce that can't step up and buy a $280,000 affordable unit. Now, if you live in a million-dollar house, 280,000 sounds great. If you're working as a bartender, not so much. So one of the things I look at, I'm on the planning commission, we haven't done anything in changing our code to demand more of, of people who are building individual houses, people are building smaller projects, stepping up what we're asking people who are doing MPDs to do. There's a whole opportunity there, and then there's another piece that says private-public partnerships. We have land, but the city is right now taking the approach of, we have land, we're the developer, we do all the thing, we're the landlord, and, and as a result, we're only hitting a little, narrow piece of the market, you know, a couple of dozen units at a time. I think we have to take this, and if you really want to hit 800, number one, you need more money, number two, you need to step up the responsibility. So you bring the, you start demanding more from the developers, and you bring in other people who are willing to allow us to build the rental properties out that we need. Just building things that people can buy is, is just barely kind of making a dent.
Okay, third question with Andy. So Park City says it has $40 million to spend for affordable housing. I'm thinking of a couple of empty and right-down buildings on Main Street, the Centennial, the Star Hotel. The city has a critical priority of providing affordable housing, so would you support Park City purchasing these inhabitable properties, perhaps using eminent domain, I'm not in the territory, I don't know if that works, but given that we have it as a critical priority to create affordable housing and recreate what both the Centennial and the Star Hotel have been historically, boarding houses?
I, I think the city is willing to consider any creative option to get to our goal, but as Steve pointed out, if we have a finite amount of money, and we need to be smart about how we spend that, with that $40 million, if we're doing a 20% to 25% subsidy on each, each unit we sell, that $40 million, once we sell through the first wave of homes, we'll have 32, and so on, so on. And if we spend that money well, we'll get well over $100 million of leverage out of that. What complicates that is if we go into rental units, and I think to do rental units, we want, that's where we really need to work with partners, particularly somebody like mountain lands. And we have looked at public-private partnerships. The city would far prefer to have somebody else building our housing for us and just donating land. At this point, the market is so hot, no one's interested. They're far more interested in making money off of luxury condos. But the long and short is, with those, with those units, I expect those are probably very expensive and would not, we wouldn't get much bang for our buck. We would only satisfy a few rooms for our community, so even though we can help with historic preservation, those buildings are already protected, and when they're bought eventually and redeveloped, they're going to have to preserve their historic character. So I'm not sure if that's the approach we would take, but we certainly look at anything that comes to the table.
One of the criticisms I hear about the city's affordable housing plan is that, you know, it's, it's all for sale and it has to be brand-new. Is that true?
Um, right now, there are needs across the spectrum. We have needs for young families, for seniors, we have needs for rentals, and we, we have workforce needs, and, and, um, we are triaging at this point. We think young families address the community building, and we've also made seniors a priority at this point. We have 500 affordable units and 400 of them around us at this point. So it makes more sense to focus on units to sell as well as if leverage is our money further, but we know there's desperate need around us, and we are working on a project or two that we think that could bring a significant amount of rentals into play. And again, that will likely be done with mountain lands or habitat, somebody that can work with federal tax credits that the city can.
All right, well, Dana, the Centennial, what's it as, since you were mayor?
Uh, and before. Um, yeah, I, I agree with Andy here in terms of, I don't think the Centennial or a few of the others you forgot, Bee's Canyon Lodge, but I don't think any of them would be justified in terms of the cost of rehabbing those buildings, because it would be exorbitant, and I do think the money is better spent on other product. Although, I do think that we do have aging product, especially up around the resort, and we have lots of studios and one-bedrooms. Their availability kind of comes in, is a little cyclic, but we haven't looked at the potential there in terms of, could we fit a certain amount of the housing we need by buying those market-grade units?
Actually, we have looked at that possibility. We look at it all the time, and one of the problems with buying those individual condo units is that the HOA fees are exorbitant and that affects the affordability component of what we're trying to achieve here. So that, that's problematic, and with regard to two buildings that were called out, I agree with both Dana and Andy on that, they're already preserved because they're in the historic district, so any remodel or renovation is going to achieve that, and unless, I mean, you know, as Andy said, we're willing to consider anything that's creative, if the price came down to something that made them, made it pencil out, we'd certainly look at it. Good example of that is the lobster loft behind Freshies. We bought 11 units from a private sector developer at a discount, and we converted what would have been 11 free-market units into 11 affordable units. That's a private-public partnership. Another variation of private-public partnership that we use is we are not the developer, we hire private sector architects, private sector planners, private sector contractors, and we oversee the property, the whole project to deliver a product that benefits the community. We unplug private sector profit, and we plug in community benefit. So that's, that's the goal there. One example of something that we get, when we use the other tool in the toolbox, which is our inclusionary zoning, anything that, any development that's above 10 units incurs a 20% affordable obligation. Silver Star is a fabulous example of this. It's a beautiful development. It has 32 or 34 free-market, private-sector condos. They're all two and three bedrooms, they sell for multiple millions. It's beautiful, they have commercial, and they have 20 affordable units. That's what they incurred as their obligation, and they built it, those are sold, they're occupied. Now, in my opinion, that does not represent a neighborhood. It does add to our affordable housing stock, and I'll tell you, the 20 people who live there, the 20 families, think they, you know, they've won the jackpot, but you will not find people trick-or-treating up there on Halloween. It is just not a neighborhood. So if we're going to try to build a neighborhood and perpetuate our authentic community, we can't do it through what the existing regulations that incur the 20% obligation. If Steve wants to bump that to 30%, you know, he'd certainly be willing to listen to it. If he wants to expand that to every single, you know, house that is built, incur some form of obligation, council's willing to listen to that. We haven't heard any of that come from the planning commission, so, you know, we're open to all the tools in the toolbox.
Real quick, I, that was news to me, that we purchased those lobster lofts at a discount. I thought we pulled full market value of those.
20% discount.
Thanks for that clarification. Mark?
Well, you know, when I lived in town, affordable housing was considered a 120-year-old minor shack, and I lived in more minor shack than anything else. And those are the houses that were being lifted and been made into, you know, 3,500 square feet off the back. Definitely Main Street, Centennial, anything up in that area, we know, and then the logistics of just building that is horrifying. But I will say that when we keep talking about responsibility, I see a lot of the private sector, I mean, Mr. Stabler, when he had the Alaska, and he, he kept all those people in there, redid it, and I thought, well, that was, that was amazing, and I, I don't know if he had the property next to it, the Star, which was, it still was an amazing property, it just, it needs some work. But it seems that we're all trying to lump everything all together, because it doesn't have to be, you know, a standard-looking, I mean, put behind the buggy bath, the buggy bath, but the car wash, where they have those little units that are, they're tiny, but they're definitely sustainable because they're, they're so easy to return as a rental. I still stand up for the fact that we've got two major people here in this town, we've got Mark Fisher, we've got Mike Sweetie over there, and they've got some large property, and I'm sure if they were to build anything in their, in their area, that they hopefully would incorporate that, and that's our private sector. Um, I'm still looking towards that area, like I said, on Deer Valley Drive, tis Beal Land Land with the three old minor shacks, and then I think the, the burnt-out building, well, they got to figure out how, how this historic thing, it's burnt and it's dead, get rid of it. But it's, it definitely has a, it can be, it can, it can work together from where the live condos was, and then we still have Quinn's Junction, which has been annexed, and I see a lot of houses going up there, but it's about a size. We don't have to make everything so big. So I'm still on that tiny home thought here in my head, and definitely, you know, should be container houses, things like that. Those can be communities, we can make those communities, so I'm all about that.
Steve?
A couple of things. I would have to agree with what just about everybody said, that you have to be really careful about picking your properties. I think the idea of not having to build everything new and being able to go in and redevelop something is interesting, but trying to find, you know, prime Main Street kind of prices is, I think, just almost out of the question. So I think the idea of looking at places, especially as you look through town now, you've got more and more properties kind of getting to the point where they're 25, 30 years old, and kind of looking for a lot of remodel anyway, there may be some opportunities there. I would actually point us to maybe some different things, and I have been part of the discussions with city council, but if you look in, in areas that we have property, we the city own property right now, look right off of Bonanza. We keep our salt there, we fix our trucks there, we store our buses there. That's like absolutely superb, prime location to build affordable housing. It's near the drugstores and the grocery stores, it's near the transit. We're going to build a new transit center with the Arts District, it's right down the street from that, and it's like, yeah, is the city reluctant to move their salt store somewhere less convenient? Yeah? Should we really be considering that? Because, I mean, that's, that's acreage that we already own, that we aren't going to have to pay tens and tens of millions of dollars to acquire the land. And so I think there's some things that, if we're going to get to 800, we're going to have to be really smart financially, and, you know, we can't kind of go wanzie-tuzie.
Well, there's certainly millions to consider rebuilding the public works facility somewhere else.
Yeah.
Josh?
Um, well, to start with the, the two properties that you identified, I got a question about a month ago, of, you know, 100 years ago, Park City's population was bigger and we, it all fit, and we didn't have all the transit, or the traffic issues. Well, nobody owned cars, nobody was expecting a parking spot and a half, nobody had a 3,000 square foot home, and of course, all of the homes that were here were actually occupied year-round. So we don't have that same ideal scenario. The bunkhouse idea, I think, is certainly something worth looking into. Now, you know, certainly with those two properties, the, the cost of renovation actually really realistic and might be prohibitive, but 100 years ago, people, especially the working people... But a hundred years ago, people, especially the working people, were not expecting a huge home. Nor do I nor most of my colleagues in the restaurant industry expect an even fifteen hundred square foot home. We can deal with much less. I'm kind of to, to Mark's, uh, uh, small house idea. We can look more to, to that angle and I think that's fair. Um, and, and then also to Old Town in particular. For a couple of years, I lived at Eighteen One King Road, fantastic hundred thirty old mining house that, uh, my landlord had purchased since nineteen seventy-two for about twelve thousand dollars, which was less than my yearly rent was. But he put it on the market a few years ago and it was slated as a hundred thousand dollar house on a four hundred thousand dollar lot. And I think that's where a big part of the problem, why a lot of Old Town, which is a, really should be a residential neighborhood, so much of that is going to nightly rentals just to cover the property taxes, just to make sure that the homeowners can still afford to stay there themselves. So it's, it's a complex issue and absolutely we need to look at all of the, you know, a variety of possible solutions doing.
So I, I wanna move this along, but I do have one other question for the affordable housing deal. And maybe we can just, maybe just a yes or no. Can we start with you, just to even go down the line? So, um, in nineteen ninety-five, I purchased a restricted unit and at that point, no commissions were, were paid. My fault that we're in a group full of realtors here. Um, is that something that we should require then of all of the new affordable housing that Park City is building? No commission? When we sell these units?
There is no commission.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. So I think the answer is...
That's pretty good. That was an easy one. Still confused by the question.
Leslie's under the impression that when we sell our affordable housing units, there's a commission that's charged.
This is only down for seven months.
There is a commission charged on the city's affordable housing units.
You want to ask me another that?
No, the question is moot because there isn't one.
But I just, the, the only thing we have to deal with that is the Silver Meadows. Those are the ones that Park City got involved in. Okay, we're moving on. Do you agree, Dana, with the city council's decision to limit the number of chain stores on Main Street? If you agree, advise that a good thing. Um, and then just thinking about the fact that one point two million dollar increase in sales tax revenues in this fiscal year. So maybe it is a good town, a good, a good for town to have stores selling thousand dollar sweaters, a hundred dollar ladies and increase those sales tax revenues even more by adding more chain stores.
Certainly Main Street is in jeopardy. And I think one of the things that kept chain stores out of here for so long was the basic size of the stores. They were, they're really small. They were not, uh, cost effective in terms of chains coming in and buying them. One of the things that's happened is we do have several places now on Main Street that are two thousand, three thousand square feet. Um, I'm concerned about those on how they rent them out to local businesses. Uh, but the concept, I, I am in agreement that limiting the amount of, of chain stores is, is certainly appropriate.
Dana, we know your answer.
Yeah, you do know my answer. I'm a common fan of the cap. Uh, I think it was a great idea. It's been called for, for a long time. We finally worked our way through the process and the, and the legal aspects and we came up with the defensible ordinance. Uh, we haven't banned any of ours. We capped them. There's still room for one more chain store on upper Main Street, which is the South End and six more on lower Main Street. We have two going in out of the six available spots. One is a L.L. Bean and one is a Ben &amp; Jerry's. So, you know, we're gonna have an L.L. Bean and a Ben &amp; Jerry's to add to our, our wonderful character in our fabulous community. Uh, if that were to go too far and there were no cabs, we would have all L.L. Beans, uh, Ben &amp; Jerry's, Patagonia's, North Face's. And, you know, a certain component is great. It creates a nice balance. It does energize the street. It brings people in who expect to see those. But if you're walking down Main Street and every other storefront is Patagonia or North Face, it's gonna look like a lot of other places that people go. We are not like a lot of other places that people go. And that's what I am dedicated to protecting, our authentic and different and special character. And if we don't limit chain stores ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, we're gonna be all chain stores. We didn't have any chain stores here twenty years ago. So, you know, it's, it's pretty obvious what the trend is.
We should note that the commercial rotation, that Harley-Davidson is also open.
And I should say that we went through, you know, two years of process on this with working groups. And we had landlords and merchants. We had landlords of buildings on Main Street involved in those working groups. And every single one of them said, yes, we must limit. Not ban, we need to restrict. And the day it was over, what was the appropriate ratio? This was the compromise that we arrived at using a lot of metrics and linear square feet on Main Street. But every single one, even the most staunch advocate for the private sector said, we have to create a limit.
Okay, Mark? Chain stores.
Yes, I know. He didn't wanna give up the mine, so I had to steal it from him. Uh, yeah, you know, the, the, the one thing when, when bail came in is that we were talking about the big corporate monster that came in and taking over and wanting to trademark, copyright our name. Ooh, that was a good one that went over the radio. But, uh, yes, I'm definitely for the limitation of big chain stores. But I wanna say something, uh, that I took a picture on Main Street. It was in lower Main Street. It was an art, uh, store right around the, uh, five hundred or six hundred block of Main Street. And I'm looking at this picture and it shows a picture Starbucks. Remember when we had more than, we had like three Starbucks in town where Cows was? And then this one says Starbucks, coming to Old Town soon because every small town needs six locations. And, and it, and it, I know it was sarcastic, but it's blunt, but it's very true. You know, and then I see another one that says, R.I.P. The Christmas Store, Silver Queen, Fine Arts, Lenny Bernard Galleries, The Kimball Arts Center, Clockworks Cafe, Bamboo Garden, Kona Gallery, Expanding Heart, uh, Dancing Hand, Destiny Guide, remember its progress. Who's next? Only you can choose. Remember that. Those are these stores that are all gone. And I could go on with all the pictures that I took of all these stores that are no longer in business. But it does come down to the, uh, to the lease. It's, it's, it's out of age as I was. I mean, remember we had the, there was a bar down the street called The Church? I, I think it lasted, what, seven months? Um, so yeah, we need to limit the consideration of these large corporate. You know, they really wanna be that corporate. There's an outlet store way out of the junction. It's, uh, I'm, I'm still surprised that Fairweather Food has stayed in business for so long. And I'm, and I'm proud that that, that that place is big enough to survive. See? So you guys do care. So let's work on this. Let's, let's control who comes in.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I guess the easy answer is I supported this on the planning commission before I went to city council, so I was definitely in favor of it. Um, I think it's important to distinguish, there was a lot of comment that went on as the debate with the city council. Was this a way of keeping local owners on Main Street? And it's important to remember that that's not what this is about. This is about the long-term plan that says, keep Main Street unique. It can't look like the outlet mall. It can't look like the mall, you know, ten yards down from everybody's house where they live when they come to visit here. It's all about uniqueness and I think that's the way the rule was crafted and I think it's defensible because of that. A lot of people said, well, we kinda like Patagonia, but we don't want Baby Gap. And the answer is, well, that's interesting, but you can't legislate that way. And so credit to the planning department. They did a very good job of crafting a defensible law that just really drives, draws a line in the sand and says, here's what a chain store is. If it meets this, you know, here's the limits. And so a lot of people just looked at this for different reasons. When you ask about the tax benefits, I think that's the difference. If you turn around and said, hey, tax benefits, we can have these guys come in and get more money. That's the short-term answer is you'll get more money. But then as Main Street dies because of that and we aren't unique anymore and people don't wanna come because it's just a mall, um, then I think in the long term, we've shot ourselves in the foot and there's no turning back. So...
They're not coming to Main Street to shop and eat?
I think, I think they come to Main Street to shop and eat. But I think the, the minute you get somebody, if you think about, there's two behaviors. If you go to eat, you go to a restaurant and then you go home. If you go to shop, you turn around and you walk down the street going from retail place to retail place to retail place. And I think the minute you get to where you have somebody and they go from Banana Republic to Baby Gap to, you know, uh, if one or two more are going down, we've lost it. We, we've lost the allure. You can make the facades of the buildings look as historic as you want, but when it suddenly feels like you just walked into your mall in Cincinnati, I think we're done. I think we're done. And I think it has a long-term, serious impact on why people would or would not come to Park City.
Thank you, Mr. Sodchops.
Um, I, I was gonna use suburban Cleveland as my example, but yeah. Um, and I think we have all agreed that we do not want Park City to become that. Um, you know, Ben &amp; Jerry's company, fine. I eat Ben &amp; Jerry's, sure. I would rather my friend Chris, who owns Wastet's Creamery, be able to open her ice cream shop on Main Street instead. Because that's not just vibrant uniqueness for this town, but then that's also money that's going back into the community and not paying a franchise fee, not going back to, you know, corporate headquarters in New Jersey or anything like that. Um, the, in, I'm sorry. Well, yes, wherever that corporate, Delaware. Um, but the, the one critique that I have heard from some people is actually what that definition of chain store is. And, you know, the, the possibility of, of existing businesses kind of outgrowing where they are because of success and then suddenly meeting that definition of what a chain store is. So, you know, um, overall, absolutely, I think it's, it is the right way to move forward for the town.
All right, Andy?
I, I don't think there's any debate around town that would like to remain in the town. And if you, if you look back to our core values, three of those are small, the story, and sense of community. And if Main Street turns into an outlet mall, we lose all of those. We lose the very heart of who we are. And so I think it's critical we protect Main Street. And we've done a tremendous job protecting the historic preservation on the street and trying to keep it vibrant and activated. But if we lose our small and unique businesses, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a place that no one wants to be. And it, at that point, we become more of a resort than less of a town. So I think there was a lot of work that went into this. It came out of the community, which was powerful. And the community asked for it and we had other businesses and landlords, they came to us with a plan. It was a pretty refined plan and the planning commission did an excellent job working on that further. Council spent quite a bit of time on it, but I think it's a good mix. We've got a few, uh, we, we, we still allow for fifteen percent chain stores, which do bring a lot of people to the street. But Patagonia, Lululemon, North Face, we can't deny that those have a certain level of attraction. But if they're only every sixth or seventh storefront, we can, we can blend that in with our local stores and our one, um, one-of-a-kind stores. And so I think it's a, it's a good mix. We can always tighten it, uh, a little bit if we need to. Or we can always loosen it if we need to. But I, I'm, I'm proud of the movement forward.
So is it still the case that the city has not been served with a lawsuit?
Uh, so my understanding is they, as of the last, when we last spoke, they, they, uh, they, essentially, they served, they served it at the courthouse, but they have not delivered it to the city. I'm told they have ninety days to deliver it. That's, and that's a game that's often played.
All right, Dana? Oh, did you start? You start. See, I did it, nothing.
You get to go, John.
Um, you know what? We're just gonna end it with two questions and then put in an audience question. Maybe that's just where we need to wrap things up here. Um, Tim? Eliminatory plans for the Arts and Culture District envision both the Kimball and Sundance Buildings, building small theaters within the new homes. Sundance also renovating the Sports Authority Building as a new theater. If those plans are approved, are we gonna hurt our longtime theater venues, the Egyptian Theater, the Echo Center?
Well, that certainly is not, that's not the goal. The goal is to be additive with this new Art and Culture District. So I think we're gonna be incredibly careful to craft a plan that does not compete and does not draw away or cannibalize our existing art and culture. We have a fabulous gallery association that exists throughout Main Street. Uh, we have, as you just mentioned, a lot of art and culture centers. And I think this is gonna be a wonderful additive component and that's the objective. We're also gonna have affordable housing in between those theaters that you just mentioned, the Sports Authority. Uh, we're gonna have a transit component and we hope to have affordable housing, whether that's artists in residence or our more traditional affordable housing as part of the Art and Culture District. Uh, the city will control ninety thousand square feet and we're looking to see that with, uh, some of our, you know, beloved local businesses that we've just been talking about that maybe have been forced out of Main Street and can no longer afford those rents. But Anaya's comes to mind, Soul Poles. And Soul Poles is a very soulful expression of something that we use every day when we ski, which are poles, but they're done in a creative, artistic way. So in my mind, that fits in there beautifully. Um, but that's the idea, is to be additive and complimentary and not compete.
And Mark, if you wanted to say what an idea that the process for Arts and Culture District...
Say that again, Steve, if I could get, I couldn't hear you. Say that again.
Well, I was just asking about, you know, we're, we're building theaters in the Sports Authority and our new Arts and Culture District, Sundance. Kimball are both gonna have around. We heard the existing theaters we have, Echoes and, and, uh, Kim, uh, Egyptian.
No, I definitely, we, they were affected whatsoever. And, you know, when I moved here, I was a tourer. I worked for Bambi Knight, who has her place kind of in the same neighborhood. So that definitely helps her out because she'll be part of that district, really close to it. And as someone who owned the first mobile bike shop in this town, it's definitely up the spirit of, of, of a small business. And, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Fish's property that, that surrounds all that, I think that's, this is one of the best things that we can do for our community and this is our community. I mean, what do we call it? Noma? Now? Then?
Now.
Then, now? Okay. Then and now, now and then. So yeah, and I think it's a great opportunity for this town, you know, uh, making a better community to the point at which, um, not, not everybody has to go to Main Street. Not everybody has to go to Main Street. But I don't think it's gonna affect our, our, uh, our theater interest at all.
Steve?
I, I hope that's the, the end result. Um, I think the city council, and certainly their goal and, and intent is that it doesn't hurt Main Street. I would ask that any of the businesses that are involved, um, both from an arts, uh, perspective and then just Main Street mentality, stay very involved with the planning piece that's gonna go on over the next year for the Arts and Culture District. Because there, there's risk there. I mean, you built a big new shiny thing over in Bonanza Park and, and make it really easy to get to with a new transit center and you're really trying to do everything you can to draw people there and then say, oh, and it won't have any effect. It will have an effect. And so hopefully it's purely additive, but, um, there's a, there's a lot of risk there. And I'm, you know, I, I, I will stay very actively involved and I, I hope you guys do as well because there's definitely some concerns there.
Josh?
Well, my understanding is programming, especially for the Sports Authority, would be limited to Sundance for films anyway and that they would fill the rest of their calendar with other sorts of, of activities. But, uh, overall, I, I think it's almost impossible to pull out just the, this is the one thing that affects the Egyptian or the Echo Center when we're looking at a build out at Mayflower, a build out at the Candy Space, even the, the Treasure Resort. All of these will factor into the long-term viability of, of Main Street. So to say it's, uh, you know, allowing some animal to drink this and this, I, I think is only a piece of that problem.
So about a year ago, we got approached by a group of representatives from the arts, the local arts. And, and two of the venues you brought up, their executive directors were there. They came to us and they said, it's a town, we really need to focus on expanding venues and having more capital for, for the existing venues. And so they felt that we had not, uh, done justice to our arts and culture and they needed to, it needed to grow. And we took that to heart and this was a wonderful opportunity to do that and create an actual district that doesn't compete with them, but is additive and we think it's gonna make us an arts and culture destiny. I'm sure back in the eighties, there, there was some concern by Park City that if Deer Valley came to town, it would steal from their business. And as we look back in time, it has put us on the map as, as a, as a unique ski town with, which had three resorts until recently. I guess we're down to two now, but certainly offerings for everybody. And, uh, technically, the Holiday Village venue is only going to be available for showing films on it, uh, with a special event permit. So we don't see that being something that, that runs constantly. Although I wouldn't be surprised if that grows. But at the end of the day, last night, the council hired a, a group to do public engagement. And we're gonna be spending the next year talking to all the stakeholders and having extensive conversations with the community, making sure we get this right. We, we are trying to make this a district that benefits the entire community. And that's why, uh, Kimball and City are taking lead on this. And there's gonna be a ton of opportunity for everybody to weigh in to make sure we, we do the best possible project there. And there's going to be a ton of opportunity for everybody to weigh in to make sure we do the best possible project there.
Dana?
I don't really think it's going to happen. In fact, I think many of you remember years ago when Redstone and that area started to be built out, we were very concerned in the city as to the fact that when people would be just getting off the freeway and wouldn't even make it to town. And they were bold enough to...
I wish that was the case.
I'm going to say that to mine. But, and I remember we were completely blown away when they decided to name the street North Main Street, down at Redstone. So we always have to kind of fight to protect what it is, the mix that we think is appropriate here as a community. What I'm more concerned about than this competition is how we got to this art district and whose backs it fell on in terms of paying for it. I did go back through the notes and the messages, and by the time the council announced this purchase, it was seven days before the new transient room tax was in effect. The lodging industry asked specifically, can we take a month to talk about the effect of this? Could it possibly be waited, can we wait until April to initiate it so that all the people we've already booked from January to April, we won't have to go back to raise their fees? And that wasn't acceptable. So I'm concerned about some of these decisions when they're made, when they fall, and the onus of small businesses to take care of them. But the idea that a couple more theaters are going to affect established businesses, I don't think they will.
And Tim?
You start it.
Oh, so what I would mention is, just Mark, as the other one was, he started first. I know we're at one o'clock on the map, so maybe we can keep it just kind of on the quick side here. What's your position on our electric buses? In addition, have you ridden the bus for transportation, not just for the heck of bringing it? And are these electric buses getting people out of their cars, Mark?
Oh, I can definitely believe they're getting them out of their cars. My only concern with the electric bus, when I was looking and researching it, and I'm glad we're going into a transportation mode at the end of this whole Q and A, but what concerned me about it was the fact that the bus has to go out there and has to charge up for seven minutes. Not a problem, and then I'm sure that they're going to start putting a charging unit here. But my concern was, with anything electric, if we have that moment where there's going to be gridlocked traffic, will there ever be a point where these buses shut down? And yes, there's been problems with the buses already, where they've had to take them off the street and put diesel buses back on. So I love the buses. I've taken, and I love the fact you've got the bicycles out there, and they were a great hit this year. But, and I definitely would love to support, you know, dedicated lanes for these buses. I think they're really efficient. I think they really help getting people in and out of town. But that's still my concern, is this electric aspect that can malfunction when you've got a diesel that we've known for 100 years how well the diesel works. At some point in this town, probably within the next 20 years, we're probably going to have to look at light rail to be able to get people in and out of town, because if there is a situation like we've had many times before, at four o'clock when the ski swords get out, and it's snowing a foot, foot and a half, and it's gridlocked traffic for an hour, and you can't get any of the employees to Main Street or to any of their jobs, and the buses are just sitting there. So my concern still is the electric aspect, I still love them, but tell us whether we're going to have to look at light rail.
Steve, there are a bunch of questions there.
Yeah.
Have you ridden it just for fun or for actually transportation, and is it getting people out of the cars?
So have I ridden it? Yes, I've ridden it, but for me, it's been just for fun. I'm one of the people that lives about a mile from the closest bus station or bus stop, and it's about nine tenths of a mile up a steep hill with no lights or sidewalks. And so I'm one of the underserved people for transportation. But I'll tell you, I think they're great, and I think it's an important piece of the puzzle, and I think a lot of, I hope we end up replacing more and more of the diesel buses with electric, especially if we can keep getting grants. People have complained that they've seen them going by, and there's not that many people on them, and they're like, you know, where's all this stuff that, why aren't we getting crowds? The transit plan that's been put together between the county and the city is a good one, and there's lots of pieces to it. I mean, you're going to have to get parking lines online. You're going to have to have feeders into these express buses. The buses are going to have to be able to go faster than the cars, so we're looking at bus and HOV lanes. I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff, traffic prioritization, all that's in the works, and even the concern about, hey, it's electric, but we're using coal to do it. Yeah, but that's not the intent. So if you could wave a magic wand and all of a sudden have all the transportation problems fixed, that would be great. It's not going to happen, but I think this is one piece of it, and when you get somebody like the federal government willing to pay for most of it, God bless you, take it and run, because the other steps are all coming.
Absolutely. Yes, I ride it at least once a week. I think they're great, and I'm looking forward to the next generation of electric buses that is coming that don't have some of the power issues. Not in terms of electricity, but just the, you know, getting up to speed of traffic issues. Or, you know, at some point, there will be an electric bus that will be able to take the Empire and Silver Lake bones. This bus right now that we have really is not that. But as we move forward, turning the diesel fleet over to electric, I think is both a fantastic thing for us to do and a good example for other communities.
I've been driving an electric car for five years, so I'm a huge fan of that technology. I think it is the future, and it's the near future. So I advocated very hard for these electric buses, and there was a lot of resistance. And I'm glad we got over that hump, and we got them, and we got a huge federal grant, so 85% of them was paid for by the feds. They've been very successful. We're doing that. Last I checked, we've got about 1,400 riders a day. I expect those numbers to go up a lot. There are a few things that aren't in place yet. We don't have our parking lines in place for those buses, which will help quite a bit. We just approved an agreement with UDOT, so we'll be using the bike lanes this winter as express lanes for those buses and the left signal priorities, so as people are sitting out in traffic, those buses will be racing past. I personally have ridden them, both for fun and to run errands out to Kimball Junction. I live in Old Town. It's incredibly convenient. And there's been, as Steve pointed out, they are part of a suite of tools. The council has taken the heart, the fact that the community says traffic congestion is horrendous, and we need to deal with it. So we are trying a variety of actions, and we will add up over time. All of them will add up and get a lot of traffic off the road. Last point, there's some conversations about, well, these are fueled by coal anyhow. And there is some truth in that, but what I will say is they have zero emissions. And if you've spent any time down in Salt Lake in the winter, you're going to think that's a good thing. We don't want to have that smog. They're three times as efficient when you look at their carbon footprint as a diesel bus. And by 2018, by next year, 66% of the city's power will be renewable electric. In the next few years, that'll be 100%, and the county's not far behind. So very soon, these buses will be running off entirely clean air.
I've ridden it for both. I think we've all heard over the years, people being upset about certain routes that don't seem to have a lot of people. When we first started the commuter route to Salt Lake, there was questions about, well, we're getting 10 or 11 riders a day. It takes time for these things to have an effect, and so I am completely in favor of doing it. You know, when we converted to biofuels 10 or 11 years ago, that was the most current way to go. And so I think it's a progressive look at that type of transportation. I am concerned about the fact it was a double-digit carbon increase, carbon footprint increase to the city. And we don't have time now to get into the energy discussions on where we're going and what renewables are actually going to mean here, but I think all in all, it was a great idea and a good addition to the program.
Tim?
I've ridden the electric buses for both purposes. I've also used the circulator out of Kimball Junction, and I think it's a great addition. Couple of things that need to be mentioned. We just ordered our next seven electric buses to retire the aging seven diesel buses. So that order is in, and we're going to have seven more. It'll arrive next year. A couple other just data points that I think are really interesting with regard to our transit. The Salt Lake Connect is at capacity. And as Dana says, it takes a while for ridership to build, and I don't know how long. I think that's been in place maybe six years, and it was hardly used the first year. It was subsidized by both the county, the city, and UDOT. And it is now at capacity, and UDOT is no longer involved. They've been released from their subsidy. And we're looking to add frequency on the Salt Lake Connect. We've also put in place this year the Camus Connect, or the Camus Route. And that is being extremely realistic, and that would be an outstanding route for one of our electric buses. And to Mark's point, we are creating currently a charging station at the Old Town Transit Center. You can see that already rolled off, but that charging station will go there, so that the electric buses can charge on each end. They charge for three minutes. That's about all they need. If they're really in dire shape, they can charge for more, but their time in that charger is about three minutes at this point.
Okay, well, as I mentioned, we're going to give you 30 seconds here just to kind of let these folks know why they should vote for you. We'll start right up on Steve. Sure.
So I'll just wrap up with one thing that we haven't talked about, which is, in the past five years, we've seen two half percent sales taxes, a $25 million bond, a transient room tax of 1%. We've renewed the RDA for another 15 years so we can borrow against that. And when we look at how we're paying for the Arts District, we talked about the lodging tax paying for it, but there's actually another $50 million to build out our part of the Arts District. And we haven't talked yet of how that's, where that's going to come from and how we're going to pay for it. My concern is that we're in good standing financially. We've got a great bond reading, but we are spending money fast. We keep adding new revenue sources, and that pushes back on the local businesses, the local residents, the second homeowners, the tourists. Everybody is getting hit with more taxes, and I would like to bring a little bit more financial discussion into everything that we do.
Josh Hopson?
Well, the one thing I haven't mentioned is I have not come to Carson's 2004 and get around by my bike and the bus primarily. So certainly discussions, and I have been a transit advocate for years when I was in New York. And so, yeah, the discussions about traffic are meaningful to me. I've been dealing with this for a while. And also, I just, I have no love for parking lots, or even, and I know this is going to turn off a lot of people, street parking. I think it's as aesthetically unpleasing as we could probably get. So I think our community needs to be built around people and not cars. And we need to make sure that the broad swath of humanity that wants to live here is able to, and that all the working folk that keep this city going, keep it moving forward, can actually not just get by here, but thrive here.
Andy Beerman?
Yeah, well, it's been a great honor to serve on city council the last six years. I've had a lot of fun, and I'm really proud of what we've accomplished, particularly in the last two years. I feel like we've moved forward. We've stopped studying, and we've started taking action, which I believe is what the community wants. And as Steve pointed out, we are spending a lot of money, but the way I see it is we have neglected the things that keep our town vital for about two decades here, and it's like letting a house run down. At some point, you have to remodel it, and it costs money, but that's what it's going to take to keep it standing. So what's more important is, are we getting a good value out of that money, and is that money going into the community priorities? I believe it is. I'm excited. We have momentum. And I'm running for mayor to keep the focus and the momentum on building community. Ultimately, a strong community is going to be the counterbalance to the corporate influences and the growth we're facing.
Dana Williams?
Thank you. As a resident for almost 40 years now, and activist for 30 of them, and have that being elected official, my, one thing I learned very early on was that my only job was to be the representative of the people who lived here. That's created through community vision, not through coffees with council, not through individual hearings on particular topics, but actually coming up with a plan that is based on what the citizens are telling the government to do. I enjoyed it. It helped us create a roadmap for the future, and I would like to do that again, so I appreciate you both.
I'm Tim Hanny, and I've lived here for 26 years. I've called Park City home for those 26 years. A little bit shocked to hear Dana say that you can't learn what your community is asking you to do without a visioning session. I do believe that we get the feedback from the residents through coffee with council, through outreach, through public input, through emails, through all the various ways that we interact and engage with the community. And Dana, all people should know that, because he was the mayor for three terms. Maybe that's why we have critical issues today that need to be addressed in a very urgent fashion, and we need to spend the money that we need to spend on these things, because they weren't elected, because action was not taken. I'm extremely proud and honored to have served on city council for the last four years. I'm very proud of this community, and that's why I continue to call it home, because of the people who live here, because we are dedicated and committed to perpetuating our authentic community into the future, and we are taking action to accomplish that. We're not talking about, we're not entering concepts into the lexicon of the discussion. We are actually implementing. And that's what it's going to take. It's going to take money. It's going to take action. It's going to take political will, and it's going to take the backing of the community. And we have heard loud and clear what we need to be doing, and we are delivering on your behalf. And I am honored to have been part of that for the last four years, and I'd love to do it for another four.
Mark Moon?
One of the largest complaints that I've heard going from home to home and beating the street is that the people here in this town have complained that our current administration is considered more care about the tourism than they care about the people who live here. And as someone who's lived here for 28 years, and part of leadership, number nine, and worked for a lot of people that are actually in this room, I've watched this town change literally from outside my window. And the experience I've gained from working directly with most city employees in every job and every nonprofit organization I've given was my time to. Remember, it's not about me, it's about you. It's about who you can trust, your money, and ideas that you want to implement in this community. I decided to run for city council because I'd been disappointed with the administration and some of the ideas that they wanted to pass without considering necessarily the people that live here. And I can only hope that you believe in some of the things that I believe in, and I hope that you consider me. Thank you very much.
And thank you for all of your patience, and I would run over and apologize for that. But again, a big round of applause for our community. Clearly, we're glad people like to have you, so thank you very much, and good luck to all of you. Thank you to the Board of Realtors and the Park City Chamber for hosting our lunch concert.
Thank you everybody for coming. I just wanted to say I'm happy to have the Park City Board of Realtors and the Park City Chamber were delighted that you came out for this important agenda forum. Thanks.